Good evening, White Marsh. Welcome to our Township Board of Supervisor meeting for January 13th, 2022. We are beginning almost quarter after seven, and we apologize, we've had some technical difficulties. We are live through Zoom, and if you're having difficulty with Zoom, you can also find us through the YouTube channel. And we are three board members here tonight in person and two virtual, and I think we're ready to begin. J.C., would you like to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fran, I think you have a couple announcements.
Yes, thanks, Laura. Snow is forecasted for this weekend. We remind all residents to park on the even addressed side of their street where marked. This will ensure emergency vehicle access to you and your neighborhood during the snowstorm. Signups for the winter hayride are taking place now. The hayrides will take place on Tuesday, January 18th, and Thursday, January 20th. You can register online at the Parks and Rec page or by calling the Parks and Recreation Department at 610-825-3535. Township offices will be closed on Monday, January 17th, in honor of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. The MLK Day Clothing Drive is accepting donations now through January 20th at the Cedar Grove Barn, 100 Cedar Grove Road. Help us beat last year's record of 14,000 pounds. Thank you.
My Zoom just cut out. Are we still good? Okay. Okay. That's probably just my computer. I'm very excited tonight to have our chief, Chris Ward, introduce our next segment. We have a promotion tonight in the township, Brian Mack, to our rank of Lieutenant Chief.
Thank you. After a competitive process, we did make an appointment to the position of Lieutenant with the Police Department. Brian Mack has been a police officer in White Marsh Township for 22 years. Brian began his career in White Marsh as an intern in 1997, and then Brian was hired as a full-time officer in 1999. Brian has served as a field training officer. Brian is the department's lead certified instructor for self-defense and TASER. Brian was promoted to the rank of Corporal in 2007 and was promoted to the rank of Sergeant in 2009. Brian served as a patrol supervisor for seven years and the community relations sergeant for the last five years. Brian is the department's representative to the county records management system and oversees our financial requirements within the township. Brian was born and raised in White Marsh Township before moving to Gilbertsville, to the Gilbertsville area, to raise his family. Brian is joined tonight by his wife, Colleen, and their three children, Kylie, Alexis, and A.J. Also in attendance is Brian's mother, Mrs. Jane Mack. Brian is a graduate of St. Philip of Nirei here in Lafayette Hill and LaSalle College High School in Springfield. Brian is a graduate of Villanova University, where he earned a bachelor's degree in accounting. Brian is a graduate of Northwestern University School of Police Staffing Command, Class 426, and the Federal Bureau of Investigation's Law Enforcement Executive Development Trilogy Program. Lieutenant Mack has been assigned the Administrative Division Commander overseeing the Detective Division, the Traffic Safety Unit, and our Communications Division. I would like to take the opportunity to recognize Brian this evening and bring his family up. I will apologize, I feel bad, because normally we pack this room with our families and other officers, and unfortunately, under the circumstances, we're unable to do so. But please, join me in congratulating Lieutenant Mack on his promotion to Lieutenant.
This is prepayment for the time that you're on. We're gonna go up front, we'll get some pictures. The board and the family.
Do you want to hop in there for him as well? Please do this in great.
He's my high-tech Zoom as well.
Brian, do you have like a formal presentation speech tonight? Lieutenant?
I don't want to take up any more of your time, so everyone will be behind, so I'll just...
Very good.
No, but thank you to Chief Lieutenant, everyone that normally would be here, we wouldn't be without them, and thank you to Mr. Miller and the board for the opportunity.
Absolutely.
And to my family for all the time that they deal with me, so.
We're really honored and thrilled, thank you.
Congratulations, Brian. You're a great face to the leadership team for the White Marsh PD, that's for sure. And there's no doubt how crowded this room would have been under normal circumstances, not just your fellow police officers, but so many people in this community who love you. And you've done so much with our kids, with the cop camp, you've been the coffee with the cop, you've done so much for this community, you've earned this, so congratulations, I'm so happy for you. And thank you to your wife and family for sharing Brian with us. And thank you to Mrs. Mack for making my son Jake into the man he is today. So anyway, thank you, appreciate it.
We'll do this again in the spring, and you can fill the room.
We'd love to. Permission to be excused.
Granted. Granted.
Thank you all.
Okay, moving on to less exciting things. Do I have a motion to adopt our meeting minutes from December 9th, 2021, and January 3rd, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. I'm going to rearrange the agenda briefly and move our consideration of board commission appointment, Stephen Malloy, to open space up, so that he doesn't have to wait through the rest of our meeting. Sorry, hold on one second. Do I have a motion to approve the appointment of Stephen Malloy to the Open Space Committee with the term ending December 31st, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
And I think, there he is, he's on the call. Steve, did you want to say anything tonight? You don't have to, no pressure.
Sorry, but I'm having some troubles getting in, but good evening, everyone, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve this community. I'm here with my wife and my three younger daughters the past eight years along the creek, and really passionate about this community. I think open spaces and what that committee does really makes our community better, and hope to be able to continue to serve and push along the great things that they've done. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Excellent, and I will say, as the liaison to the Open Space Committee, I know that Steve attended a few of the meetings the past year, so he's aware of what's been happening lately. Certainly, the board was in favor, I spoke or was in correspondence with the chair, and they are in favor of this appointment as well. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Welcome, Steve, thank you for your time.
Thank you all, I appreciate it.
We have a couple board public discussion items tonight, or one in particular. We're going to begin with a review of the subdivision land develop 11-21, which is Creeks Edge Project LLC, 548 South Bethlehem Pike. This is a conditional preliminary slash final plan minor subdivision in land development, lot consolidation for live-work building.
Hello. I'm Evan Pellegrino from Inland Design. I'm the engineer for the project. This is Tim, one of the representatives of Creekside LLC. And the project is, as you said, at 548 South Bethlehem Pike. That's on the west, the east side, West Hicken Creek is on the west side, residential properties to the north and south. What is being proposed is the removal of the existing house and garage building, and then the new construction raised on piers, so it's above the floodplain of a live-work building. The bottom floor of the building would be the workspace where Tim and John would do their artistry, and the top floor would be living space, where John would be the primary person that lives there. Tim will continue to live at his home. It's on lot septic, until you make your wife angry, and it's public water, and it would be gas as well.
Sorry, this is the, what is there now, I'm sorry, I didn't get there at the right time.
Yeah, so there's the existing features plan. As you see, the smaller building toward the center of the two properties is the garage, and then the building further to the south is the house. There is two parcels, right behind the garage, there's a property line, so we'd be consolidating it to one property that's just under an acre. We did do a flood study to show that the removal of the existing structures and the addition of the new structure doesn't raise the floodplain. In addition to septic system, since it's being lifted up, graded up, doesn't raise the floodplain as well. That's something we're going to submit as part of the approval process, hopefully post-conditional approval process.
Thank you.
There was relief necessary from the floodplain conservation district and a couple of other issues in the VC district, which the applicant obtained from the zoning hearing board several months ago.
Chair of Water Minister, I just wanted to, I know this resolution's on later on the agenda, I know there were 12 waivers as part of the resolution, I just wanted to know, Mr. Guttenplan or Ms. Heinrich, did you have any issues with any of those waivers? I know many there were waived at a floodplain, as you mentioned.
I have no objections to any of the waiver requests.
And I want to mention, the Planning Commission reviewed this in December, and they reviewed each of those 12 waivers and made two motions, one motion in favor of recommending all of the 12 waivers, and the second motion was in favor of recommending approval of the preliminary slash final minor subdivision of land development plan. And it is a subdivision of land development, because as Evan mentioned, they are combining two parcels, therefore it's a subdivision, and the rest of it is the land development aspect of it.
Charlie, did the Planning Commission apply any conditions to the recommendation?
Did the Planning Commission what? I'm sorry.
Apply any condition to the recommendation.
There were, the only condition was that the applicant comply with the review letters, which they've indicated they can do, and also, there were several comments in the Montgomery County Planning Commission letter concerning landscaping, and they asked that the applicant consult with the Shade Tree Commission with respect, and the Arborist, I guess, excuse me, with respect to those recommendations, and if necessary, make whatever changes are necessary. This parcel is unique in one respect from a landscape standpoint, and when they started this process, they needed a number of replacements. Unfortunately, or maybe fortunately in their case, IDA and the tornado took down all but one replacement, all but one tree that now has to be replaced, so their only obligation for Chapter 55 is to replace one tree, and they've more than done that. The landscape plan is here, and I think you can see it's pretty profuse, and it has been approved by the Shade Tree Commission, subject to whatever minor changes based on the county's comments.
Rick, quick question for you, does the resolution before us reflect the conditions from the Planning Commission and the Shade Tree Commission?
Do they have them in there, Charlie?
The resolution has a condition that they comply with the county letter to the extent that was endorsed by the Township Planning Commission, so I think we're pretty well covered there.
The only question I had related to the Planning Commission, the summary asked that there was more information related to the deck, because I think it does extend over, did you get that information over to the county?
We're gonna just pull the deck back.
Okay.
Yeah, see, right there, yeah. Fun, it's there.
If you, Charlie, can you scroll up to the number four, sheet four, please? So... The deck is gonna now end here, because that's the part that put you in.
So it's not going to be in the floodplain as much?
It's gonna be, it's not gonna be in the floodway. The whole property is actually in the floodplain.
Yeah, so, yeah, one thing that I'd like to mention relative to the floodplain is the entire property, as Evan just indicated, is in the floodplain. The floodplain essentially ends right at Bethlehem Pike, so the new construction is much closer to the edge of the floodplain than the existing house and garage that's being raised, that's kind of right in the middle of it.
And then there was also our fire marshal had mentioned about the fire hydrant, has that been?
Yeah, there's a fire hydrant, and I, these are the plans we submitted, we've since revised them, because we're going through iterations and making sure we comply. There is a fire hydrant just north of the turnpike on the west side of the road, and then there's a fire hydrant just south at the existing intersection there, on the east side of the road.
And would the fire marshal, Charlie, have to go back to review, or that's part of the approval process?
As long as it complies with his review, there should be no issue, but he will see the plans again.
Okay. Do we have any other board questions? Any public, I don't see any in the chat, were there any emails that came through? Is everybody okay to move this to a resolution tonight?
Yes. Yep. Who's that?
And J.C., Patrice?
It's from something before, Sean. It's from something before.
Okay, are we good to proceed? Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-05, granting conditional preliminary slash final plan approval for SLD 11-21, Creeks Edge Project LLC, 548 South Bethlehem Pike, minor subdivision in land development, lot consolidation for a new 3,100 square foot live-work building?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller, will you please call the roll?
Mr. McCusker? Yes. Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yeah.
Chair Nestor?
Yes.
Thank you, okay.
Thank you.
Yes, congratulations.
Good luck.
Good luck.
It's a great use of that property, wish you all the best.
Thank you, thank you. Been a long time coming to get to this point. Thank you, very much.
Well, I think you, is it guitar? Someone makes guitars?
Yeah, I restore vintage guitars.
Yeah, that's good to know.
That's what I do.
Awesome, that's very exciting.
One of these days, I'm gonna have time, post-COVID, to pick his head all about.
And my friend and business partner, John, has a, has a patent on a chair design, so he's a, he's a designer, so it's gonna be very much an artisans workshop.
Perfect.
That's cool.
Wonderful.
That's what it is.
Best of luck with it all.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we have another resolution to consider sewer planning module. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-06, authorizing the submission of a sewer planning module for SLD 05-14, 901 Washington Partners LP, 901 Washington Street?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Chair Nestor. This is a sanitary sewer for the 901 development, it requires DEP's approval and the approval of this board to provide, allow my signature to go on for submission to DEP for the sewer planning module. This was reviewed by the White Marsh Township Authority and their engineer, they reviewed it and indicated they had no problem, and confirmed that we could consider this and approve it at our meeting here this evening. No issues just to allow for public sewers on and for that project.
Excellent, thank you. Do we have any board comments or questions? No, no public comments have come through. Okay, Mr. Miller, will you please call the roll?
Mr. McCusker? Yes. Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yeah.
Chair Nestor?
Yes.
Great, thank you. The next is another resolution. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-07, authorizing the restatement of qualified retirement plan for the non-uniformed employees' retirement plan with Nationwide?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Chair Nestor, this is an administrative action that's required, our non-uniformed, non-union retirement plan is with Nationwide, we've been with them since 2020, they're requiring the reapproval of the plan summary, with that plan summary and why they're doing it, it just updates to today's current laws as well as dates, but there is no significant change to the plan at all. They're requiring signature from the board as well as from myself as being, acting on behalf of the township for the plan.
Excellent. Any board comments or questions?
No.
Nope, and I don't see any comments in the chat. Mr. Miller, please call the roll.
Mr. McCusker? Yes. Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yeah.
Chair Nestor?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. Moving on to our motions tonight, do I have a motion to authorize the purchase of radios from the fire budget fund balance in the amount of $25,705.39 to allow the emergency services additional radios that operate on the township system?
So moved.
Second.
I guess, Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Chair Nestor, this is something that has been worked on for the better part of 12, maybe 13 months at the emergency services level, and what this will, what these radios will allow is for our emergency services to have the capability to touch base with the township when we are not on a county radio system and signal. So, for instance, if there is a large event that is impacting White Marsh in general, and sometimes the 911 center can be overwhelmed, or we opened our emergency operations center, we might be using our own frequency, so that we can communicate internally with all of our agencies in the township. The fire and ambulance, they had a radio each. What they're looking to do is expand it for their vehicles and their officers, so if they're out in the field and our emergency operations center is open and we're using this township radio system, then we're able to continue to speak with them and they'll be able to hear us. It allows for better communication amongst the emergency services and the township when we're in those situations. So that is the reason we have some fund balance from 2020 to 2021, the remaining amount will come from their fire relief fund, so that'll be something that they'll use that money for the additional funds in order to be, in order to make the purchase of the radios.
Excellent, thank you. I just was able to log back in Zoom, so I'm good. I'm good.
You seem to be up and running, just on my computer.
Excellent, do we have any board comments or questions? All right, and I don't see anybody in the chat here. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize escrow release number eight for White Marsh Knolls LLC, Germantown Pike, in the amount of $181,641.84?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Miller?
I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Heinrich.
Thank you, this is a request from the developer of the Knolls at White Marsh. The request is for $181,641.84. We've inspected the site to confirm that the items requested have been constructed in accordance with the plan, found that they have, and recommend release of the amount requested. And then following this release, there will still be $108,995.97 in escrow.
Excellent, and I saw on this, Krista, that there are still some trees that need to get replanted, that's still...
That is correct.
Underway, right.
And anytime they request landscaping monies, we have the township borrowers go confirm and produce a memo.
Any board comments or questions? All right, you're gonna have to look, because I got kicked out of Zoom, so you'll have to tell me what J.C. and Patrice say. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I heard him, good. Motion carries, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve expenditures totaling $4,580,260? I'm gonna try that again, $4,580,260.72, I didn't quite get that right either. Payroll totaling $727,814.12, and pension paid costs totaling $12,358.14, and I'll go back and say it right, $4,580,260.72.
You're a hell of a major, I saw.
Oh my gosh.
It's a new numerical system.
It's crazy, sorry about that. There, now I'm back out, okay.
After all this...
Little tricky to manage the...
So moved.
Thank you.
Your second.
Second, sorry.
All right, any questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And now, that comes to our public comment period. And I'm back out of Zoom, so you'll have to tell me, so are there any, okay. Any board comments or questions? Any board comments or questions? I'd like to announce that tonight we did have an executive session where we discussed Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Awesome, thank you. Good night, White Marsh.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.